All right, so I have got six o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the village board trustees for the Village of Bellville from Monday, February third. Starlight.
Let's go.
There we suppose the star.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think.
You all.
Right, President Larson.
President.
Jesse Bannan.
Here.
I'd proud.
Here.
Hasmar.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Pigler.
Here.
And service.
Here.
Public forum.
The meeting posted.
Was posted as required by law.
Okay, next is public participation. Public participation allows citizens to be heard on any agenda and non-agenda item. The public may also comment during the public participation section. Beach item, the village board shall make no decisions or consideration of action of citizen comments. For items not on the agenda, except to refer the matter to the village administrator for administrative consideration or to schedule the matter for board consideration at a later date. Usually if you've got a comment, please take the podium, state your name, um, address, and try to keep it to approximately thirty minutes. Anybody have a non-agenda item? Connie?
Connie here for question number one. How much did they pay for the depot? Number two. And why did they get it?
Any other public comments? Okay, next we will go to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests it, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. And this includes the village board meeting minutes from January twenty first of twenty twenty five and the January twenty twenty five check register.
I have a question. When I looked at the check register, we gave the school eight hundred and what was forty-eight thousand dollars. How many times do we pay them a year? Two times?
Yeah, there's tax settlement, there's one in January and one in February.
I'm sorry, what?
The tax settlement. So there's one in January and one in February.
One in July?
No, the county does that.
Okay.
Actually, that one's end of August, but yeah.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I'll move the approvals of the consent agenda.
Second it.
Okay, motion McGary second of a maxime. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries. President's report, nothing for me today. Staff reports?
All I have is that Parks and Rent Committee and then the Economic Development Committee will be busy. So the next meeting, so I would say go to those. Lot of fun things.
Would you say they're gonna be what?
Parks and EDC will both have a lot going on this week. I recommend going if you're interested.
Uh, in-person absentee voting starts tomorrow and goes through the fourteenth. Reminder that our next village board meeting will be at the library because of the election on the eighteenth. Um, oh, I had one more thing.
And it's just for the primary, which is?
Yeah, it's, there's one primary, it's a state superintendent of public instruction, I think is what it is. Um, I apologize. I had one more thing. I didn't pull up my own memo, so that's.
Oh, licensing.
Oh, uh, the new forms, that's what it was. Uh, so we have new forms for special event and park reservations there on up on the website along with the new fee schedule which started this month. And we've had a couple people use them already. They're simple and easy to use and we've had positive response to it so far, but just for anybody looking to rent a shelter or host an event or anything, um, just be aware that everything's shiny and new. So that was the other thing.
Nothing? Nothing? Jim? Andrea?
Nope.
All right, we're gonna keep moving along. Full business. First items, discuss and consider a partnership with the Upper Sugar River Watershed Association.
Yes, your last meeting, I presented initially and wanted to hear from the organization itself. So Robert and Jasmine are here to kind of walk you through the partnership.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it. I'm gonna share the thing right now. Can you? Takes two apps to do.
Listening to me?
Yeah, if I could just, uh, mention, uh, I remember the, the board president, uh, came and met with, I think, the Parks and Environment Committee, and so thank you. And so, uh, I'd like to introduce you to Jasmine Wyatt, uh, our new executive director that started officially on January first. So. I'll continue.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so this is very quick. Um, yeah, if that works best. Um, and I'll just kind of sit down here when we want to switch. That's okay. Yep. Um, so again, I'm Jasmine, started in January. So this is a very short presentation. I just wanted to provide some images so that you kind of have an idea when we're mentioning programs, what they are, what they look like. That way you can ask questions dot me in particular that you'd like. Um, so you can go to the next one. If I could go. Perfect. Um, so I just wanted to start out, we have a really long name, Upper Sugar, um, and so I wanted to break it down a little bit, just so that you understand who we are, why we do the things in the region that we do them. So we are a watershed association. So essentially a watershed is the area of land that drains into a specific water body. Our water body of interest is the Sugar River. So our watershed association works anywhere that the water drains to the Sugar River. That's what we are focused on most of the time. Um, so it's in glaciated and unglaciated areas, um, so some in the driftless, some not. In Dane County, um, it is about a hundred and seventy square miles and it has a ton of different resources on it that we focus on fisheries, um, recreational areas, native plants, the, uh, areas. And so a lot of the work that we do has to focus on recreation, but we also kind of care about the community of the people, the urban spaces that are also part of this. So that is our area of interest. I've flipped it, but it's. Five oh one. Oh, there we go. Okay. It's a lag, apparently. Um, so within this region, we are a self-sustaining grassroots nonprofit, a five oh one C three. And so we focus on kind of the people that live in this watershed as well as the animals, plants, and organisms that live in this watershed and kind of how we coexist and impact each other. Specifically, we do that through outreach, education, invasive species monitoring, and programmatic events. Whatever, it's like a timed. But. Never had a lag this bad. Apologies. No problem. Um, so the different types of things that we do in the work, uh, the watershed, we do have reoccurring partnership events where we work to restore, um, natural areas. Specifically, we partner with the DNR in state natural areas, um, like the Sugar River Wetlands. Um, I'll open this up to Robert. He's worked a lot with this program and this advocacy with the Badger Mill Creek that have been going on. We helped to work to build a coalition of advocates, other groups, and stakeholders in the area of the Badger Mill Creek specifically because there were some changes that were going to happen with that water, the effluent coming out of that, um, and that was going to impact that kind of ecosystem. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I, I would just add that, uh, the decision that Madison Metro Sewerage District Commissioners made was that they were going to shift from having two affluent outfalls, one into Badger Mill Creek and one in Badfish Creek. They're gonna switch all that to Badfish Creek. Then the concern is what about water quantity, water quality related to then all downstream because Badger Mill is in the upper part. And so even though it might seem isolated, what's happening up there is going to have effects downstream throughout. And so part of what Upper Sugar took the lead on is we recognized that there was a lot of just lack of coordination, lack of, you know, who's doing what. Uh, you know, part of the reason this issue got so controversial was just because people didn't know. And so we took the lead and we developed a proposal for a watershed management plan that would bring together all the villages and townships up and down the watershed, different groups like Southwest Trotting Limited, uh, other organizations, schools, so that then we can work together to come up with a plan. Uh, it, right now, that decision is kind of on hold because the city of Verona has, uh, pending litigation with DNR. Uh, but we wanted to put together a plan that we could do regardless of what that decision is. And so, uh, that's, that's what we did. And so there's a plan that, uh, we've now requested funding to, to build those, uh, to build that again, of course.
Go ahead. Perfect. Um, we also continue to work on an initiative we call the State of the Watershed to kind of put a lot of information together, both historical data, current events like the Badger Mill Creek issues, and put that together in one place so that anyone within the watershed or outside of it could find information like that about the goings-on in the watershed impacts conditions at the time, both historical and career. We also, in the watershed, work with partner groups, um, the DNR and volunteers to maintain and add bootbrush stations, which help, uh, anglers, folks that are going out wading in the water, um, to prevent the spread of invasive species from some areas within the watershed. Um, there's a specific species of concern, the New Zealand mudsnail, if you're into that kind of thing. There are a lot of places in our Upper Sugar River watershed that are already infested with that invasive species. And, um, because it is so impactful on the, the ecosystem, we have a lot of focus on trying to prevent it spread elsewhere. Um, so these are a great tool to help prevent that. Um, so we manage those. One of the main programs that we have within our watershed for, uh, community science specifically is our wave or water action volunteers program. This is where volunteers go out periodically throughout the spring, summer, and fall, and they monitor water bodies. So a lot of the Sugar River as well as some of our tributaries. Um, we have volunteers that go out, collect all this different type of data, the water, um, oxygen that is dissolved, transparency, any new invasive species they may identify. And that information they put on a DNR database. And then that, uh, that information is directly used by DNR and other state agencies or local agencies to inform management practices. Um, so it's a very direct line from volunteer community scientists straight to information that can be used by land managers. There's not too many more, don't worry. Oh, this is what I get for adding animations. My bad. There's only four clicks here. Um, it does provide this data to government agencies, like I said. Um, that definitely also does add to decision-making power. A lot of times, um, the DNR is able to be like, hey, we don't know a lot about this small stream. So we don't know whether there's trout in there even, if there's anything of concern, but this data can actually impact that and, and give them that information. Plus, if there's an area that doesn't have a lot of data, the DNR can let locals know like us, and we can ask for volunteers to go and collect some information about that spot that the DNR doesn't have capacity to get. Do you include, I mean, I don't know if it's. You're okay. It should be one more. Okay, there it goes. And then you're good. All right. The last goal there is about the National Drought Monitor. That's actually one where in the last, uh, couple of years that we've had big, long drought periods in the summer in this area. That's been really handy because the National Drought Monitor Service has been able to kind of just pull that data and use it to find out where locally in Wisconsin that drought was most prevalent, specifically for like agricultural folks. So that was really useful.
You know, I would add with the water action volunteers that, uh, one thing that we do is we provide the training, we recruit the volunteers, we provide the training. And then it's not uncommon, for example, if there's a particular stream, a tributary in your area that you've got some concerns about, we can try to identify a volunteer that will do some of this monitoring, and then we can help provide those data. There is a, uh, water action volunteer that is monitoring in the Basco area. So, uh, I just wanted to add.
Um, one of our favorite programs in the summer is the People Program that we, um, we facilitate real close here. Uh, we usually have it both at the, um, Bellville Public Library as well as the Community Park. Um, and this program is for first-generation college-bound high schoolers, and it's a two-day, full-day event where we host these folks and we take them to a local farm so they can see what local farming practices look like. Um, the local farm for the last couple of years has taught them about having horses, raising beef cattle, um, having local vegetable gardens that you sell at farmers markets, so they get to see a lot of the range of agriculture there. And then we spend, um, the rest of those two days at the park doing paddling, and some have never been in a canoe before, so that's always exciting. We talk about invasive species, we see native species in the area. Um, it's a very fun couple of days for these folks. But we also get to show them not just that these are in the, um, natural environment around them, but that there are careers that they could aspire to in the natural resources. And we have folks come in, give their perspective on their natural resources career, so they can kind of be thinking about what they may want to study in the future, if that's something that really sparks curiosity for them. Thank you.
Yeah, and we do really appreciate being able to, to do this at Community Park.
It's kind of a perfect.
The river and the lake. Uh, and then the public library has been just really, really helpful. I mean, what a cool place. Uh, I did want to mention that we, uh, reached out to the high school, uh, because this program is a university program, but the materials that we developed, we wanted to make those available to the, to the high school. Uh, one thing that we did was we created a scavenger hunt, an ecology scavenger hunt for the Community Park and Sugar River Trail. And so that was, that would be a good way to sort of engage different, different youth groups. And so we're making the materials available and locally as well.
Um, and then one of the last, um, kind of throughout our watershed programs here is the, uh, Explorer Backpacks Program, where we started this, um, pilot in the Mount Ford Schools, and we're working this year to expand it to other areas, um, other schools and public libraries, where we have these backpacks full of supplies for young folks and their guardians to go out and interact with nature in a little bit deeper level, maybe learn something about it or observe it in a way that they might not normally know how. Um, so it's got all the supplies in there, first aid, binoculars, you know, the whole nine yards, and lesson plan guidance for those that are taking the kiddos out there. They can kind of be like, even if, you know, they don't know anything about how to observe something, there's guidance for them as well. Um, this is very exciting, fun one. Uh, plus, who doesn't love giving little binoculars? It's good. It's good. All right. You can go ahead. And then, um, one of the programs or one of the like facets of what Upper Sugar does is our invasive species programming. This is actually something where we work in the watershed for sure, but we actually work beyond the watershed as well. And we do, um, secure DNR funding, uh, often for, uh, to supplement our invasive species outreach, education, and monitoring in a six-county area in southwest Wisconsin. So with invasive species, we work all from Dane to Sauk County, down to Green County, and all the way over to Grant. Um, so we kind of have a big chunk of the southwest that we do expand this programming. Um, so this could be youth education days, biocontrol rearing, as well as carp removal programs. All right. And then lastly, um, Gabe let us know that there were some questions, and we wanted to highlight some of the information about municipal memberships with Upper Sugar. Um, so in general, we, um, talk to municipalities in our area that we do a lot of our programs within to help fund those programs like we kind of mentioned prior. Um, so I'll open that up. I know, uh, Robert has a little bit more history about this, um, if we have any questions, but this is kind of where I wanted to end it because I knew there were some questions prior. Um, so this lists some of the amounts that are asked for from different municipalities, um, primarily based on formulating how many folks are in the watershed, the area of the watershed, um, to fund kind of the scale of those programs, if that makes sense. But that's all I had for slides, but definitely if there were specific questions, Robert and I are happy to try to answer them best we can.
And I, I would say with the municipal membership and memberships, we have individual and family, municipal, we have some corporate members. And that is critical for us in that we've been very good at getting grant funding to do specific projects. I know the last time I was here, we were talking about potentially some carp removal and doing some things like that. Uh, you know, we're, we're very good at doing that, but we've got programs like a lot of the education and outreach, water action volunteers, that those are supported exclusively by memberships, so like the municipal memberships, individual and family and corporate. Uh, with Gabe's question, uh, I tried to track down through some of the very early board members and executive directors. And the exact formula is buried in some QuickBooks that hasn't migrated. But what we did was we put together, just so you could have a picture of, of how it plays out. What has been done over, uh, at least my understanding over about the last ten years is we have, if there have been changes in the population or in the acreage, now usually there are changes in the acreage now, but with population changes, then we've included a, a modest increase of a percentage. So you can see on here, uh, with Village of Bellville, uh, a few years ago, it was a little more than eleven hundred. And then the most recent request we had was, was fifteen hundred. Uh, and that is something that we also, you know, we like to come to board meetings like this because we also view that as a, you know, it's an opportunity to talk about what works and what can work for you. But that's where those, those numbers have come from.
Are there any questions right away? If that's a good time for y'all?
Do we have a board of questions? Take off. I guess also.
Seems to be a little back. And power. Or.
Okay.
Online another question?
Yeah, no, I don't think they had a question. I think they just logged in.
Well, I guess. I'm, I'm kind of curious to, to know just a little bit, like, if you could get a little specific on what types of projects you, you see us potentially working, working together on, um, with parents to the lake and the river, obviously. And, uh, along with that, so, you know, we talked, you talked about a little bit on invasive species and, and the DNR has grant programs for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so like, would your organization write grants for us? And, and request monies for invasive species, or is that something different where you would have to, you would assist someone else writing for us?
It would kind of depend on what you were looking for. If it was something where you just wanted help with like identifying invasive species in the park or something small or short-term, that's probably something that we would just do in-house. Um, probably myself would be a, a part of that. Um, but if it's like you want to remove the carp out of the lake, and so we're gonna need a little bit more person power to do that, we would probably work with you and help to subsidize the writing of a grant. Um, there are DNR funds to help pay for writing of management plans for lakes. Uh, we have one going for Cherokee Marsh in Dane County this year, where I'm helping to apply for the grant to pay the contractor to make up a land management plan. And then the next year, we're helping to get a grant to pay for the control of the invasive species. So, um, that process would be, we would help you to write a grant to make a plan probably, and that makes you more likely to get a grant to control an invasive species like the carp. Does that make sense?
Along with that, in-house type thing might also be coming out here identifying what invasive species we do have.
Exactly.
Both plants and animals and.
Exactly.
Whatever else there is.
Yep.
Okay.
I, I think to your point, like, uh, one of the ways that we tend to work, because we have a staff of three, one full-time, two part-time. And so very often what we're, we're doing is we are also, or just say doing a, a survey of invasive species, maybe there's some count we want to do. Then we recruit a number of volunteers to assist with that. And a number of the projects that Jasmine is involved with, she works at the county level to then get volunteers from different organizations, uh, to, to do some of the things that, you know, the grant won't necessarily support. I would also say that after I came last year sometime, that I talked with Jasmine and she'd gone to a couple of, uh, really cool, uh, sort of demonstrations and trials for carp removal. And, and so, you know, she's got a lot of information about that that I think we could bridge there.
If it was specific to carp, we'd probably work with the Dane County Land and Water District because they have been specifically netting and removing carp out of Indian Lake, um, in the northern part of the county. And so they have a lot of experience that if we could partner with them, with us, and with the village, we would have a lot of that expertise capability of writing a grant to make kind of a really good, robust plan. Yeah. Any other questions?
I think it, it, I assume it's maybe just a vocalizing of my understanding because that's how.
Go for it. Yes.
So apologies. Um, it sounds like the basis of your organization is education, instruction, getting people, becoming advocates for things. But then also there's some of this that's sort of building blocks into actually, I don't say not doing the work. Like more action type of stuff, but it's, it's some of the stuff is, I'm not trying to be dismissive about it, but it's more, it's incremental, right? It's the, it's the invasive species identification. That's something in many instances you can do in-house, but if we were talking about something like, um, working on the water quality for the lake itself, that's probably a bigger project than you'd be able to handle in-house, obviously. You might have resources and directions that you could point us towards.
Right.
But it's, it's gonna be a partnership and sort of an, an ongoing effort to basically do that.
Yeah.
And part of this, and I think that's what I struggle with, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but we're, obviously we've got a large creasement that's available to us to help work on.
Your goals are.
Yeah, well, but it's for literally like the lake and the river and like handling some of that stuff. And it's sort of a monumental task, right, to think of, especially because it's a man-made, like made lake, so there's a lot of different issues there relative to that. But obviously we'd like, you know, my core issue for the whole thing, and it again might not be shared with the rest, by the rest of the board, is, you know, how do we utilize those funds to last as long as we can and get them to last? But also to navigate the things to me that are most important, which is, let's keep the river clean and keep the invasive species out if we can clear out carp and some of that sort of stuff. You know, there's extra stuff down the road if we want to put in a beach, or we want to do some other stuff that's more enjoyment or more entertainment or, or activity level base, that's great. But like, I, I'm trying to not rein it in, but I, like, the core stuff is, to me, is what's most important because if we don't have, you know, if we don't have clean water and we don't have a great environment to, to, you'd be able to utilize those resources, like, doesn't matter, you know, what kind of beach we have, if we can't swim in the water, right?
Right. I think that's, yeah, that, I think your understanding is correct. A lot of times our role is kind of letting people know they have an invasive species or other issue to start with, whether it's our monitors knowing there's no dissolved, dissolved oxygen for trout, or there's invasive species in your beach. Um, we kind of find out there's an issue, and then our usual job is to help folks find more resources through grants and partnerships to take more action than our three-person staff can do in-house. Exactly. Yep.
That's all.
Yeah, and, you know, and I would say that, you know, there's, you're in a unique position where you do have some funds. And so I think, you know, just looking strategically about how, how to leverage those funds then into something then where you can, you can add in other grant resources and things like that. Because I know for some of the projects we do, the time and effort to write a grant. The time and effort to write a grant. If we can get that in another way, we don't have the constraints.
Right.
And so that would be one strategy is to look at sort of your goals, your priorities. What, what can be done and how can we leverage those funds? That would.
And I think a large part of it, again, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, but. I'm trying to get my head wrapped around how to prioritize some of these things, right? Like there's like. Rain on anybody's parade, beach is way down the list for me because it's more like, hey, how do we make it so that? Like we, we, we have the funds to support focusing on the water quality and invasive species and, and wildlife and all that sort of stuff. That to me is sort of the core, the natural resources that we have, right? That we don't want to. Do that, but that's.
Yeah, I would say a land management plan, the creation of that kind of helps provide that roadmap. So you can say, these are our end goals, best case scenario. Our minimum requirements, and then how can we like, you could look at that in three to five years and be like, where are we on this plan? What steps do we, it can like. Make it a menu for you.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I heard that you had said that you are working with Indian Lake to remove a carp. So what exactly are, what are some of the things that you're doing to get the carp out of there and how are you helping them?
Yeah, so I worked with the DNR and Dane County folks this summer and we did what's called gill netting. Where you put out these net lines that are weighted at the bottom. They're relatively shallow, but Indian Lake is relatively shallow, so they pretty much go from the bottom of the water column to the top. The carp, we, um, we kind of just do a circle in the boat a few times, let the, the nets are run out there. And the carp get scared and go into the nets, get stuck. We remove those carp out of the lake and dispose of them in a farmer's land for fertilizer. So it's physical removing from these nets. If that makes sense.
Quite an expensive plan. How do you help? Just do that for me?
Yeah, so a lot of the time, the, the nets, the, the, um, sorry, Dane County owns the nets and they own the boat. So it was kind of a partnership between, they had the funds to remove the, um, carp and spend their million hours doing that. And they could use their boat to do that. We had other folks like myself go out and help and produce, um, more people to help. And then we had the connection with the farmers. It was free to dispose of the fish themselves. So it's really more of just like the labor cost. There's no like herbicide or anything like that that we're using. So it's just kind of the cost of labor and there are grants that can help facilitate those.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It says partnership, then it says membership. Membership always costs money. So what does this cost?
So like our general to be, become a municipal member of Upper Sugar, we're asking for that $1,500. Um, for that yearly membership. If there was ever like, uh, we wanted to partner on a specific carp removal project. We could see if there was other funding necessary, whether we were going to apply for grants and make a plan in that specific project.
That's it, 1,500?
That's the, just to be a municipal member to continue all of the education programs we already do. Yes.
Per year.
Yep, per year.
I'm not against it. Yeah, no, but it's, yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah. Well, and I think we've been a member in the past, but I think that was part of it is that I think, I don't know when our membership lapsed, if you want to say, but it, it was like one, 21 some couple of years ago, so we haven't kept.
It's good to check in.
Yeah.
You know, one thing is, you know, when I think about. Invasive species, I, I think along two lines. One, what can we do to manage what's there? Is it possible to just eradicate completely? And in some systems it is. In other systems, all you're really able to do is knock it down. And then the other part of a good plan is, okay, now how do we prevent them from getting back in here? And so those would be questions that we would, we would help answer. It is not uncommon for us to then help identify different contractors. So like some of the, uh, grants that Jasmine has been involved with. Then for some of the work that we have built in money where then a contractor, but we help identify the contractor. We work with the contractor on, on different things, especially around invasive species.
Makes sense.
That's the kind of things that I want, I want to know before, you know, like. We need to dredge the lake to improve its water quality. I mean, there's no expense in, I mean, any time worrying about invasive species inside the lake if.
If you're going to judge.
Take the whole thing up and.
Right.
And the, you know, and then that's a, that all goes in that land management plan.
Exactly, exactly. Yep.
Want to think a large part of that is even where you're, you're describing it, is you've got that education element of stuff that you do as well. So, and again. Puck mind's eye is sort of like, wouldn't it be great to have you guys partner with the high school so we can get a bunch of kids. That understand about invasive species so that, yes, we can bring in the experts and do all that and do those wonderful things, but if we've got. A whole slew of people that want to learn about the environment and can actually be advocates for it and actually. Say do the work, but they can put that effort towards, do the same thing, that we can do it that way as well.
How often do you have to dredge a lake? Because we did do dredging.
It really depends on like how much water is coming through it when it was engineered and how efficient it is. I know that's not a great answer, but it can be like in really old land, like man-made lakes, it can be really often. Like five, 10 years every time they need to, but some of them are built a little bit more efficiently nowadays and don't need to be done as often.
Do you remember how long ago was it we drenched it?
10, 12 years?
I'll say 10, 12 years.
And I know on some areas where there's been dredging. You know, one of the concerns is so, like there's one pond that. I've done research on in Verona where it was only about five years ago that they, they dredged it because it had such. Sediment and a lot of phosphorus getting in, and so you had all these algae blooms. And so they dredged it. But they didn't do anything about the sediments coming back in.
Sure, sure.
And so it has almost the same sediment load that it had a few years ago. And so I think. You know, asking, okay, what are the sources of phosphorus? What can we do about that? What are the sources of sediments? At, you know, and, and so it's, it's sort of that approach of doing a, a pretty thorough assessment where then you can look at. Okay, now how do we get to where we, we want to get to? You know, it's, is one of your goals. Water clarity, you know, having fairly clear water. And if that's the case, there are some things we do. Are you concerned about oxygen levels? And so it's identifying, what are the sources of concern and then just seeing where we are. And those are, you know, those kinds of assessments are things that we have some capacity to do and we've got partnerships that we can help, help do that.
Do you have to dredge in the summer? Could you put it off to like September?
I think usually they have to dredge during the warmer growing season for the most part.
Shut down the lake for the summer. Well, it's longer than that. Yeah, and a year it had to drown? I think the, two years.
Well, that would be, the lake started to fill sooner than that because it took two years for the park to dry or for the. Sediment that we put on the park to, to be usable again, so. Like, if I remember correctly, once dredging was done. Water could, we could start filling the lake back up again.
I don't think so. I think it's sad.
Well, the other difficult part is a very different situation than 10 or 11 years ago because Burm was there before.
Right.
And the lake itself is now a separate body. It's not connected to the river, the way that it once was.
Just see, hate to say shut down for summer.
Well, agreed, but if, and then, and I'm, I don't, I, I don't think we're trying to get to a prescription yet. You've got to do an assessment first, but. If that's the right answer, maybe that's the right thing to do, but like I think the issue is. And figure out what's going on first to see, and, and, and this, and even before that, we need to figure out what it, what it is we're trying to get to, right? Which might be water clarity, it might be oxygenation, it might be game fishing, it might be. Swim, it might be a bunch of different stuff that we're trying to do all at once, so.
And the cost.
Yeah.
Ah, don't worry about that.
That's a first.
But I, I do think a thing that we could, we could. Create some concrete near-term plans. Is raise awareness. And have some education and outreach. Like a few years ago, I came down and I gave a talk at the library. And, you know, that's something that Jasmine can do, that's something I can do, it's something we can bring. People together to do. But just, just to raise awareness and, and I think part of what that does is it helps get input. And it helps generate buy-in. And that's, that's kind of our bread and butter.
So when do the memberships run? Usually from January 1st, December 31st, or how do they run?
It's for like individual memberships. If you were just an individual and you're like, I want to become a member, you can do that any time of year. There are definitely like more holiday drives or times when we're. Specifically, um, like in the winter, but you can become a member at any point in time.
But the municipals tend to be.
Yeah, yeah, we try to do that. It usually works for people's budgets, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If we have money to pay this?
We can book it on the first night.
We'll make a motion that we join the trigger of the leadership.
Back to that.
Shelley, because I think she was quicker on the draw.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
And I would also say, you know, I'm, I know I met with your parks committee, if there are. Smaller groups or working groups, like if you're looking at some of the bequeaths, you know, as. If it looks like it would be beneficial for Jasmine or Jasmine and I, or her B. We're happy to try to, to help with that so that it keeps moving.
Yeah, it's super helpful to know. I think as we move forward with stuff, because we're, we're still navigating kind of what our priority list is, you can probably tell, so.
I think that's going to be a great help to have.
Absolutely.
Someone to help us navigate.
Awesome. I'm sorry?
Sign either way, what is the board, what is?
Leadership association.
So it makes sense to come out.
So we're in discussion right now, so does it make sense to bring it out and take it out of the bequeathment or what's, what are people's thoughts?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to call it out of the bequeathment because that's actually.
On its floor.
Sure.
Less than one month.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right.
I think, I think it should come out of the quick bequeathment also. It's, in my opinion, very clearly.
Yeah, associated. Yeah, I don't think we're going to get any pushback, so.
This is a long time. Okay, I'll make that motion. Yeah, amend the motion to come out of the bequeathment.
We're unanimous on that. We don't need to make an emotion. We could just amend it. If you were going to fight about it.
Can be Jack taking another bequeathment?
So we'll just, we'll just amend that to the motion.
Yeah, so the motion is join the Upper Sugar, Upper Sugar River Water Said, Water Defend Association, excuse me. And for the, the, the payments of those. Use of that membership to come out of the bequeathment.
So do it every year, or do you want it to readjust that next financial period?
Be part of the budget for.
Yeah, I think if it comes, I would assume that we would probably want to continue it, but I, I would say make that part of the budget process. So I, I assume that that's, that would be the intent. I thought it was hard, but yeah.
That part doesn't have to be part of the motion. Just use that as, as a staff direction. No.
I made the motion seconded by Shelley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is discuss and consider the next steps regarding the Stephen Fisher Trust.
Right, so you guys came up with a long list. I emailed you that list prior to the meeting. Trustees have okayed every single one of those projects. So you can do any and all of those or none of those.
Essential projects.
Yeah, so you guys, and I'm not asking for decisions to make. But you guys need to figure out, how do you, now that you have tons of potential projects, how do you want to whittle that away? They are important. So I guess for you guys, what do you want that process to look like? Do you want that to be the next board and then. A board annual retreat? Like, do you want a meeting just on that? Like, because that could take a little while. So like, what do you want? How do you want to move forward? Do you want to set up an ad hoc committee that'll pick up business on this? Do you want to send it just to the parks committee?
I would lean towards an ad hoc committee because I think we're going to need the community involvement for this. That's my initial five.
How many trustees on it? How many committee members on it?
Two trustees, three community members.
Yeah, we have an ad member.
Yeah, yeah. You, yeah, you'd want, you'd want an ad.
You'd want an ad.
Yeah, which is what she said. She said two trustees.
Oh, I thought you said three, and three, okay.
I would say two or three trustees and the remaining commi- community members for that, but I'm trying to think of like, what do we have for. For perks, we've got that. So we've got three and two. I, I think that's enough. Five is probably plenty. I think if we get too many more.
Too many is going to be, yeah.
Not, I mean, it's going to be difficult enough anyway, but.
Do you want them to report to you? Do you want them to progress to the parks committee?
And then the parks respect us, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Skip the parks and bring it up.
That's what he's asking. Trying to think, are there, are there any things that an ad hoc committee is going to discuss that would, that would directly impact the parks committee?
If it goes to parks first. Parks would be probably more in tune with anything else going on that may.
Right.
Be involved.
Especially.
Mostly involved, so.
Parks master planning, like if we put a beach in, like the parks committee is probably going to be the one. Manage that.
Right.
I just think there's, there's a little bit more coordination involved with parks first.
And we merge wildlife committee and parks committee together. So technically that would be. But again, do you just want to skip that committee and go to the board?
Are my committees still active?
Part of the parks committee.
Part of the parks.
We've all, it's all did it together. Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with going through parks first. I'm just like, I don't. I don't want to drag it out anymore than we have to though either in terms of.
How do you think it should go to parks personally?
I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just trying to think in my head like what it's going to be like.
Well, I'm guessing at least one or two of the trustees that are on parks will probably be the one or two trustees that are. Maybe not, that are going to be on this.
Ad hoc committee?
Ad hoc committee, so. I mean, it shouldn't be, and they're going to be open meetings, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't think there's a lot of secrets going on here, anything like that. It's not, that's not like, it's not my concern. I'm not, that's not what I'm worried about. I'm more just like. Yeah, with just other layers. Which is fine. What's the, what would be the mechanism for the duration of the ad hoc committee, assuming once we've kind of drafted up?
Yeah, once there's a project plan that's approved by the board, because that's what we do with the personnel committee, once the.
Yeah.
Personnel manual was done.
Right.
So what are we, so this committee will take the list that we have, that we came up with. Prioritize it. And bring it back to. Yeah, and I could say if like, you decide you want to put a grant part of it in there and applicants could apply for a grant, just for example. That could be the committee that goes through that. So like, maybe it does exist a little bit longer, depending on what you do with the money.
I think they would, they would set up some sort of a framework for. You know, not only prioritizing the projects. But organizations might be involved with stages of those projects. And at the same time, which projects that they know of at the time, you know, are. Granted available for that we can also leverage.
I think, I want to, careful here though, because you're talking about, that's a long term, because that's, that's a lot of work. And I'm not saying at all, I, I'm thinking more of, and, and it might be an incremental thing where you set up different ad hocs. Over time, because it sounds to me like we need to. We need to prioritize a, a list of potential projects, right? Like we've got a. Random brainstormings that we put together, but there, there might be things that we'd add to that. There might be some things that we would. take off from that, that would drop to the bottom of the list, et cetera. And I think the the, the.
Like getting into grant writing is a little more into the weeds.
Well, and I think.
That would come after
Right.
after at minimum a land management prep and comes out.
Well, and again, that, that's even a part of this, right? Is to say, hey, here's sort of the, I don't want to say a strategy, but how we would put it all together, but I, I'm envisioning that similar, again, it's a good analogy to talk about the personnel man, right? Is that there's a finish line that this ad hoc committee needs to get to. And once that's there, then that makes the picture clear as to like what resources and efforts, whether it's grant writing, doing a land management plan, or doing like three or four different things that we might want to pursue, that we might need to set up additional ad hoc committees to, to facilitate that. But I think that's, that was kind of my question as to like.
You told me.
What does that finish line look like?
What would we be willing to have completed the handoff?
Say it out.
Kind of idea that comes out of my mind.
The report that includes all the financing, that includes the projects, that includes the scope, that includes what are you doing, when are you doing it, what does the timeline look like?
Well, the recommendation for the prioritization. I mean, I think the other big part of this is the community involvement, cause you're gonna have public meetings that are gonna be available to, to weigh in on, like, this is really important and we understand, you know. That's, maybe I'm thinking of like, but.
I mean, so if we could, I mean, if we create this committee, we could give them a six months or nine months, you know, whatever sunset date and, you know, if, if it needs to be, we could extend it at that point, but I think, I think on this committee, we should give them a goal is that here's when we would like to buy it. So that they, you know, so they have these public meetings and you know, the timeframe that they have to have these meetings in and everything. So, um, and, you know, come back, but they're deliverable to, to the Parks Committee, so. We make it, can I make a motion to create this committee and, or it sounds really technically on the agenda?
No, so I would, I have to, you have to do a resolution and stuff like that.
Okay.
Create it, so I would have to bring that back. That's a nice board.
Well, I would, if I were, just to put my two cents in, I'd say create it, five members, three and two or two and three, whatever, and with a, a final report due to Parks Committee by September 30th or something like that, so. And then that way, we've got it before we get hit deep in budget and if there are gonna be expenses other than out of the bequeachment or whatever, we know what we're looking at that, so.
You say the 30th?
Yeah, or maybe September 1st, we should say.
Your time is just time.
Yeah.
Jim?
I think, I think the first thing, I think that he should work on. He has to. You see what? Figure out what you should plan it. To do all those projects. Like, yeah, to figure out what your master plan is gonna be before you start tackling the projects.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, I, I'm, again, I'm envisioning this ad hoc committee is like this, it might morph into something where it's getting things done relative to that. To me, the initial ad hoc committee is, is prioritizing the ideas to say, do we even want to pursue thinking about putting a bridge across, you know, Village Street or Village Drive over to the park, or do we want to think about putting a beach in? Or do we want to think about, you know, like, I don't, like, I don't have the list in front of me, but like, the list of different things, right? I think that, again, I'm not even sure that I'm gonna be on the ad hoc committee, but if I were, I would probably be focusing on water quality, invasive species, and a lot of the stuff we've talked about are core, sort of core fundamental things. But some of those things, we even need to engage with partners to say, what's, what are the costs of those things, right? Because ultimately, we still have to come back to, the bequeachment is not a never-ending pot of money. So, you know, it, it gets back to the conversation, I think, that we had last board meeting, which is I'm not an advocate for blowing all this money one time to like, get everything dialed in. I'd much rather say, hey, how can we make this last as long as we possibly can? And if that, that might mean that we can't do some of those things from the bequeachment. Cause I think that's the scope of this ad hoc committee is really, how to best utilize this and sort of come up with a plan that that community members can buy into that we can, as a board or the, a future board can say, this is what's there. Totally agree with you. Ultimately, once you get to that implementation stage, you need to start saying, okay, how do you, how do you get those things done? And I agree that maybe this ad hoc committee kind of morph into that at that stage, but I'm guessing it's more of a whittling that list down to say, hey, these are, these will be, gotta have them. Nice to have. Plus we win the lottery, probably not gonna do these things anytime soon, or we need to fund it and maybe take it out of the pot of the discussion relative to this. But that's, that's the way I'm thinking about it. Cause it's very initial stage type of stuff. And I agree with you, like, I'm not diminishing, I just think I, I, to get there even, I think we need to have the have the conversations.
It's important that both plans, the master plan for parks and this the people are involved enough that they know what's in both.
Correct.
And so we don't end up with some weird timing thing that, in executing projects at the wrong time that cause more problems. One that, one that, and, and that's why we're organizing it here is, you know, I, I just envision, you know, repave the park or something, and then we dredge the lake and destroy the asphalt.
Right.
You have to lift trucks or, you know, something stupid like that. I don't know, but yeah, so it's needed.
So any other direction you need, Gabe, relative to that?
I think that looks good to me.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions or concerns relative to that approach?
Obviously, like you're gonna put a master plan and a park's plan and all that, kind of, purge it all together.
I mean, it would be helpful to have, like, updates to the Parks Committee, probably every other month, maybe until the due date, or like even month, I suppose you could even do it monthly, but that's gonna be helpful. I would imagine the ad hoc committee is probably only gonna be once a month or so.
Thank you.
Anything else that we need to discuss, Roland, regarding the Stephen Fisher Trust?
I think.
One question.
Go ahead.
Um, Gabe, does that Fisher's money stay with Fisher until there's given projects or?
The $40,000 left will stay with him until they approve the project. And then, once all that's done, they'll get that. But until that time, it'll stay.
So basically, we're saying that's not gonna happen likely until September-ish or even later than that.
Unless they feel more confident that they like.
Yeah.
Hey, next on the agenda is discuss and consider a peer donation from the Burst nick family.
So this is Parks Committee. Uh, we brought them to the board a while ago just to get your guys' feedback. The, their recommendation that the Parks Committee approved was taking the pier from Candy Point because it's not used, uh, and taking it over until they develop. Probably, you know, where the monument is on the left side by the berm, moving to the right of there is kind of the recommended location. Um, they will pay for all the transferings, uh, probably the permits, all that kind of stuff. I'll work with them to get the permits up. They're gonna handle all of that. Public Works will probably be there to help monitor, just make sure nothing goes wrong, but they're gonna pay for it and all that. And they're gonna look at probably putting like a bench or something at Candy Point just as a something to put there. Take away from that, so that was there.
So Candy Park will remain Candy Park. The pier will just come out and a bench might go in there.
Is you have a comment?
That's not the rumor going around town. Again, take a rumor for what it is, but.
Of course not. What's the rumor going around town?
Well, that's.
What, what, what rumor is this and what is?
Rename the park or take the, you know, all that kind of stuff, so.
Curious, interesting.
Yeah.
Gotta get a little drama.
I, yeah.
Just to make it fun.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna work to get this done. Out some bobbers.
That was the goal, but they don't know.
Yeah, obviously. Do we have a date for that yet, Chris?
Oh, we don't.
So it probably, there's funding and they need to get their family all, that is their goal by the summer.
We'll see. I think I misunderstood, Gabe. Or you misunderstood about the bench? I remember saying they were putting the bench.
They're recommending we put something there. If that is just a bench.
That's was we.
Them.
I sort of heard it the same way.
Yeah, it was, it was we putting a bench there. I never heard him.
Yeah, I don't know that they were funding a bench necessarily, but I, like, I don't know that that's.
They know the board may want to do something and if they have to cover it, they said they were willing to.
Okay.
We'll figure it out. The bench, a bench, what are benches?
Maybe a plane bench?
$20?
No.
I want plane benches. I want like.
The last bench I bought was, I bought for the village. It's in the park. It was 1,600 something, I think. But it's, it's a bigger bench and it has all that wording on it, so.
There's a lot of stuff.
Uh, there is a size and inscription.
Well, and part of it is for Candy Point is there's, like, it's gonna, it's gotta be done differently, right? Like, like, cause it's like a zigzag sidewalk with railings and stuff there right now, so figuring out where to put a bench or multiple benches.
Thinking that's her blazer's daughter's park, so you might get a little help there.
Yeah. We'll keep that.
I'll pull out the bench.
They're gonna have a pier there.
We will replace something, whether that's them paying for it.
We'll figure it out.
Something will go in in this.
Put a mural there.
We could put a mural there. But you're running a project not free.
It's a nice and culture.
Over by the berm then?
It would be, it would be on the lake, so, so
Okay.
basically just west of the warming.
Okay.
Facing north. And there'd be, uh, there'd be like a cement, like walkway and then it, to the pier.
Okay, that's good. And I would hope that the pier this year would be put in the proper place, the regular pier.
You're talking about the kayak.
Yeah, that's not, you need pier.
That is a different.
That's a different thing, I know, but still, I just would like to make a point that.
There's two piers and they're both gonna be in the lake. There's no pier in the river. Yet, maybe down the road, we will put one there, Connie, but we don't have a pier to put up.
Oh, the pier in Candy Point, that's not been damaged by the
No.
tree or that's there, so we can maybe finally remove that tree then too, so.
So?
So, okay.
Just be careful.
Pier's a grave.
Really good.
I know, I saw that. I went out here today. Actually, there is a graves.
Now, what does it say?
Yeah. Gabe was here.
I was a little cranky. He was here and that wouldn't, I would, my resignation would be on. It was born, I couldn't tell, it said M, WM post. Uh, but it said born September 23, 1831, died October 15, 1874.
So it's an actual grave?
It is a grave marker.
A grave marker.
Grave marker. It is a marker.
Some mark.
But it's also far enough away from the pier that we likely don't have any.
And I don't think it's on our property.
It's, it's, yeah, it's over closer to like.
Closer to, to the owners, the next owner.
Yeah.
So I don't think it would impact this. Okay, I think it's probably their property now.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's always.
But, yeah. It is pretty complex. It is pretty complex. And I'm looking at our picture. There's writing on the other side too.
Uh, really?
Yeah, so I am.
So maybe it was Mr. and Mrs. Post.
I do. So, yeah.
So is there anything we need to do to, we need to basically approve this, the period, the donation or anything we need to take action on that? I think we're good with that plan. I think we still need some, to solidify some of the funding part of it, right? I think that's.
Look, I think they're gonna handle moving, we're gonna have to handle what is happening. That's partnership or that.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I think what I would need from you guys is just a agreement that they, we can work on moving that pier over to.
Yeah, I mean, we need to make a motion to.
A motion to proceed.
Motion to proceed with, with accepting your donation from
The Burst family or the, the plan relative to the pier at Candy's way.
Yeah.
Someone makes that motion.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna give it to Shelley, cause I actually made the motion when I said.
Oh, okay, Jeff made the motion. Giving Shelley the second, okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's getting stopped on.
Okay, next is discuss and consider a new tree planting RFP.
So it's also from Parks, um, with my captions to it. It's basically, we don't have trees on the west side, so we have budgeted for new trees. We've also applied for a grant that we'll be planting some trees plus some other forestry projects. And so we are wanting to hire a qualified landscaping contractor to plant trees on the west side. Uh, then, so their part of this request is they need to tell us what the cost. That way we can figure out what, how many trees we want to do, all of that. Once the west side is done, they're also gonna be doing the new side, cause we're getting $100 per tree. And from that point, it's just an ongoing, every time year, we have a new house, the next year there's a tree. So, uh, it'll just be an ongoing contract unless we decide we want to cut it. Uh, eventually, as we start growing the program maybe a little bit, if residents want to change their trees out or plant a tree, maybe the discounted cost, that could be a potential partnership. So we opened the door for that, but as of right now, it's for new trees when new substitutions come in. It's the major purpose. Given until the end of February to turn it in, um.
These are trees in the terrace.
Trees and terraces.
Yeah, yes.
You have to plant authority standards, all that.
The trees that Cody selected.
Yep, uh, Cody will work with that to come up with the right list and right percentage where and all that. He'll probably mark on the curve, this is where I want it, you guys plant it. And we'll change it, all that.
I'll move that we move forward with the tree planting RFP. So this is going to be posted somewhere for all public to see? And are we going to direct it to local?
I'm asking Jim tomorrow.
Local sound trackers in a certain radius or miles maybe?
Uh.
I don't know. Know this.
Um, what we do with every RFP, we go through landscaping firms and just send them an email, would you like to apply for this? Uh, and usually it's word by mail, mouth is kind of how you do it. So every Google Maps, Forester.
Send.
Send.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we got a motion by Gary, seconded by Tony. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, discussing consider Fourth Street, Evert Street and Mitchell Street LRIP project.
So LRIP, um, this is a grant from the DOT. Kevin is on the call too, if we need any clarification questions. But the Public Works Committee is working on a roadway maintenance plan. And as Kevin and I gave up email, Ian and I, and it's like, hey, um, there's a grant, uh, LRIP project due by April, I think, or May, uh, that they applied for like, in, uh, 430 Hill and Brace. So years ago, uh, we didn't know about it, obviously. And so that threw a wrench into my plan, so I, um, Ian and I asked Kevin to do some financing on it, figure it out. Uh, so obviously, those streets do need major work, which is why they applied for it. Uh, the, but we did put that in the budget, so normally, I think, what was it, about a hundred and some just for the road?
No, it's.
But I'm not with the utilities.
$60,000.
Yeah, $60,000 for the road. Yeah, sixty thousand dollars for the road. But the issue is nineteen seventy-five utilities underneath. So if we're gonna redo all of the roads, it does not make sense to not need utilities. So that brings it up to about two.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five. The police or the, um, Public Works Committee is recommending taking sixty thousand from the right away maintenance fund, which has a hundred thousand dollars in there. And the rest of one fifteen or two fifteen gets paid out from capital. Their recommendation. So they recommend doing the other project. The pros to it is we are getting some money back, not a ton.
You got those.
So not much back, but if we don't do it, the DOT is not gonna be happy with us. And we really need funding for other projects on this side. And so if they say no, if we say no, we're not spending your money and then we apply for it, they're like, well, you didn't do it last time. So we put ourselves in a pickle. One that we did not give, obviously, a purpose, but we are in one.
Just to kind of follow up on that, the village has gotten LRIP money every time it comes out and all you really have to do is apply for it and attend a meeting and you get the money. So, and I think I public works agree completely that, you know, to turn, you know, to turn back fourteen thousand dollars when we're gonna be asking for a lot more than that in the future with, uh, some of these other projects that are going on would not bode very well.
Uh.
So.
The only con, I guess, is state transportation aid will go down next year by fourteen. Whenever we spend an LRIP funds, state transportation aid goes down. That's not. It's.
So we're borrowing eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six?
We would borrow, if we do the utilities, you're gonna borrow two.
Two fifteen.
Capital budget.
But in the long run, we're saving money, aren't we?
Probably. Um, we could just do the streets and for five years you could do the utilities. Could do it, but it's risky. This is old utilities. I wouldn't advise you to do it, but go ahead. That option is available to me.
Is it, it's possible it can go over two fifty-two, right? You could tear it out and be like, that's a hot mess.
Could be.
For the utilities, either from nineteen fifty. Something, so. Putting a band-aid on a gunshot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, I'm not. I mean, just saying. Nice wide open.
Yes. It's not a fun position, yeah.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we move forward with the, uh, South Park Street, Fourth Street, Evert Street overlay with water main replacement. Uh, to estimate at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with sixty thousand of that, of that funding to come from the two thousand twenty-five right away maintenance funds. Fourteen thousand or the LRIP funds of fourteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents and the rest to come from a borrow.
So in second plan.
Okay, a borrow.
It's all coming from borrow.
Wow.
It also will be reversed.
Yeah, okay, reversed. Yeah, okay. All right.
Boom.
Excuse me.
So is this the entire streets or just a section or what?
It's all of Fourth, Everts and Mitchell.
I'm looking at the map now. Going Everts or early lawn. Fourth intersects them, but.
About three blocks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the entire of the streets though. If I'm counting blocks here.
And it's utilities. Like it's still gonna be, it'd be a project if we're gonna do it.
If I'm not mistaken, if you guys can hear me, um, there's, it's about nine hundred feet of water main. So I don't think the little piece on Park Street, and I think it's Everts Street does not have water main, but it's all on Fourth and Mitchell is mostly the water main part of it. The rest would still just be the mill and overlay.
Yeah, nine hundred feet. You're right, Kevin. Eighty dollars a foot.
Just wanna know exactly where else it's happening, the physical location. So is it run all the way from East Main on the north side to Fourth Street on the south?
Yes, that one block Everts.
All right.
Everts, Fourth, Mitchell, Fourth, South Park Street.
And South Park Street is, I, I want to say it might only be four hundred feet. It doesn't need water main, but it's from where the DOT left off basically to the intersection of Fourth. So it's a small stretch there.
Yeah.
It's not these full, that's not the full streets. We're just talking, how many blocks are we talking? Three blocks?
Started ninety-two heading out of town. You'd go south.
Yep.
Down in, uh, Everts and then you're gonna take the corner and go up Fourth Street to Mitchell. And from Mitchell, you are gonna go up to South Park. Otherwise, the rest is no water main.
Yes. South Park.
Park is ninety-two. So, okay, I'm telling you, ninety-two in Delaware, it's cool, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, so what, I'm sorry, it's, what part of South Park?
Well, that, that's South Park. Going north, that's new. And going south, it's new. It's past the wellhouse.
So it's just south of, south of where ninety-two is.
Water main there, coming down on Fourth Street from Vine Street to South Park, that's new. So we'd be going from South Park down forth to Mitchell and from Mitchell to the corner down there on Everts. And then you would tie it in there on ninety-two going out of town. Okay.
So that's just on my screen. That's, that's where it would be.
Okay, so it's south of ninety-two.
Yeah.
Got it.
Is that Park Street? That should be on that, that section there. That should be new main because we had replaced it with a leak detection. That was by a new fire hydrant they had put in. So that's new, it goes down probably three quarters of the way to, uh, School Street. And then that ties in there. And that part of School Street, our, part of Street was done when they did the ninety-two project.
So it's twelve hundred feet. We have a battle.
Yeah.
And just to go some numbers out, that nine hundred feet of there, that two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seventy-two thousand dollars, that is just the water is the new water main. So eighty bucks a foot.
We talked, we've talked to Brian about this, I'm assuming?
Uh, yeah, uh, we would just bug it into the FFP.
Yeah, but that's why, we don't have any big concerns from a funding standpoint.
No, Caleb's only comment is we would lose the state transportation.
Do you know how much that is?
Which we do any.
Fourteen dollars.
Yeah, every dollar of over a pound you take, you lose.
Right.
Funding.
Okay.
Uh, we could probably tie it into, uh, the borrow if we did for the, or side sewer extension potentially.
I was gonna say, this is a longer term, it's a longer term borrow, borrow, excuse me.
And we could also, we have the tid projects that we have to borrow for because we have the notes right now.
We could try to tie that too.
Because the tid to borrow, you can have it for tid borrow. Like it doesn't have to just be tid projects in that borrow. You can space them out. Tid projects end in eight years. This project ends in twenty. So. Uh, we could tighten that too. Or we could tighten it to the normal capital borrow that we would normally do anyway. So you have options. It's just, like, this is not what we addressed before. You not know about it. Probably needs to get done.
Yeah.
And there was some consternation at the Public Works because we finally got that hundred thousand dollars back up to a decent amount and none of us are thrilled about taking sixty thousand bucks out of there for this project, but I think this project needs to get done. This is probably one of the last really old water main in the village, I would think. So, is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, I think we said there might be a couple spots there north of there, but it's, it's old six inch mains. So it's not even to the, you know, standard of eight inch. And stuff, so.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we got a motion by Gary, seconded by Maxine to approve the LRIP project for Fourth Street, Evert Street, Mitchell Street, uh, not to exceed what, two hundred and seventy-five thousand? And I think he said sixty coming from the right away fund and the rest to be some borrow, some.
You know, it's good stuff.
Uh, this year, we haven't done this.
Yeah, because that was part of the problem too, was the sunset was, was it May originally, Kevin?
June.
June.
June, end of June.
Three months.
And now we have it to the end of September?
Yep.
Correct.
That's nice of them. Yeah.
So, so the schedule is, uh, approval tonight. Um, out for bid, end of, or twentieth of March. Uh, building award the bid, May fifth, and then June, July and August, they would do the project.
It has to be done by September first, isn't it?
September thirtieth. You have to put our pay request in.
So you got a motion by Gary, seconded by Maxine. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? That passes. So reports from boards, commissions and committees. So Parks and Recreation is gonna be Wednesday. Get anything beyond what we talked about?
Yeah.
Police committee?
Will they be dealing with that?
Position. Public Works and properties, properties and utilities?
This was the big thing. The other thing with the, um, water system study will be going, will be happening now in twenty twenty-five. That was a budgeted item. So that'll, when we pass order and it's done for that, um, other than that, a couple things that we're gonna have to repair or are repairing at the sewer plant, um, that's pretty much about it.
Um, we're gonna, tomorrow is we're doing the, the project kickoff for the facilities project. Uh, figuring out what to, what to do with this building and Public Works building. So that starts tomorrow. It's gonna be someone that's your spear holder till. Mm-hmm. I'll be in.
Anybody else with updates? News announcements, upcoming community events or future agenda items?
This is an arts and culture event.
Yeah, and Brian's, thank you. I wanted to say bow. Uh, is doing an event to, uh, making Valentine Day cards for donation offerings.
The mural.
For the mural, yep. For the cleaning.
The donations go towards, uh, a final, uh, sealant process and things for, for the mural to help it last longer. Uh, that is just outside of the funds that have already been raised, so.
Honey.
When do we get to see the mail?
Uh, so.
That's coming sometime soon.
We're expecting the, for sometime this month and Arts and Culture will be discussing it in March.
Okay.
So first Thursday, I've been on the list.
First Thursday.
About this month, next month.
March.
Yeah. Don't come this Thursday. We've canceled the meeting.
Right.
Um, and March third is when, uh, Jim and, uh.
Uh, for our.
Yeah.
Uh, we actually need to talk about your favorite topic.
Texas.
Yeah, I'll be sick.
Hey, you're gonna be sick?
No, don't be.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So you see that shield? I'll be under it.
It's not your case, not your.
I know.
You put your.
Same materials.
Yeah. Or is it mine? Um. I know there's comments on, online for the West Side development. Abe and I were just talking about that earlier today because I was taking the dogs out and stuff. They've taken down a lot of the trees, which wasn't a surprise because that's gonna be the, the higher density residences that are in the early entry part. That's also, there's also gonna be a road that comes in there as well. So that's a big part of it. Um, I had some concerns because I was looking through the trees and I'm like, that looks pretty narrow. Abe actually went out.
In these shoes.
In the shoes, so yeah, but.
Hundred and five feet.
Yeah, so. And that was part of our conversation with the developers.
At a hundred.
So. The condo association that backs up against that tree line was concerned about how much tree coverage there was gonna be behind that.
If we were talking about it, they, because it was a farm or whatever they did with it. The trees are in rows, so it makes it look like there's less trees, but it's not like a random thinking of things. It's a row, so you can see there were a lot.
It's because they were all planted back in the day and everybody planted trees that way, right?
These are, that's the lots of fifty by seventy are going?
Is it over here? No, that's, uh, that's Green County. Uh, this is the multifamily's going up. And you have the twenty duplexes and then like the forties.
Okay.
That's where the acre plant is going to.
There is, these are a little bit smaller lots than our, because it's part of the fund, but it's.
I did start doing fifty by seventy. Yeah, good.
I'm sorry, was it?
I did start that project today with parks, redesigns of the two parks and, uh, do two new parks. So we'll talk about that at Parks Room. And there's a lot of economic development things happening. So I would also go to the Economic Development Committee. Settle me now.
Friday, Abe, I'll be there.
I'll be there too.
I'll be there.
It'll be a blast.
When is it?
Thursday, Thursday.
So if you want to do the double header, this is Wednesday night.
Yeah.
And you back it up against Thursday morning.
I see a sleepover. We'll get sleeping bags.
Yeah, and my dog wouldn't like me very much.
He had offices down.
No, no, I'm gonna be in the couch.
Oh, you're gonna.
Awesome. I wasn't gonna, I'm not going.
No, all right. I said things like that.
Uh, the only other two announcements, I guess, Airbnb, uh, Debbie's looking at doing an Airbnb above the law. So the finance committee will be talking about, um, what, uh,
Tourism.
Tourism fund, but it's the.
Room tax.
Room tax, which is why you changed Economic Development Committee to Tourism Committee.
You have to, Connie, you have a house here.
Um, yeah. And then Ninth River Street, we were going back and forth if that's a residential property or not. But based on the legal opinion, I've changed our opinion to match the legal opinion that it is illegal, non-conforming use. So as long as they keep it as a residential house, then we're shooting.
Yeah, they upped the price ten thousand.
Do they really?
Yeah. As long as they keep it as what now?
As residential, as long as the use does not change, even for a minute.
That is, we, we don't have a good standing to basically go against it essentially.
So, because they weren't using it as a house for a year, but they were fixing it up for the intent of a house. So that's where Rick was like, he really wouldn't win. If they had sold anything out of that even for a day, like, yeah, no, that's, it would never go back. But if they say, yep, I'm gonna sell sweaters, that's commercial use, it goes back to commercial.
So now it's a house again.
It is a house.
Recent choice.
And yep, the price ten thousand?
Yeah, they upped it.
They're gonna back off.
No, it does usually goes the other way.
Ninety-five.
It is.
That's all I got.
All right. Any other updates?
Honey, you're right here.
Oh. And then answer me. My gosh.
So, no, I'm gonna read. So, do you want me, do we need to do this together? Do we need this? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we, can we do these together?
We are both.
Never again. So, closed session. So the Village of Belleville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen dot eight five subsection one subsection C. For the purposes of considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, the village board may reconvene into open session, take action on the subject matter discussion in closed session. And this is discussing consider of any chief of police. And the second is the Village of Belleville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute subsection, nineteen dot eight five subsection one subsection E. For the purposes of deliberating or negotiating a purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. or conducting other specified business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Closed session, excuse me, the Village Board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. This is regarding establishment, establishing and negotiating position regarding the Belleville Fire and EMS contract, and discuss and consider land acquisition at fourteen North Fine Street.
I make a motion, we're going to close session.
Is that you, Mike?
Yep. And Tony, it's same.
Yeah, I heard yours, I heard you first, I was just you were. Okay. And you're getting so much participation lately.
Yours tonight.
Okay, and then we've got a new role for this one, so.
Ew, all right, Trustee Bannon.
Yep.
Trustee Eiko Kraut.
Yes.
Trustee Kazmar.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Yes.
Trustee Ziegler. Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Marson.
Yes.
You are in closed session.
Seven thirty one P M. Give me just a second.
Uh, yeah, you're good.
Chiefs there.
Okay.
We're gonna do the Chiefs.
Camera.
I'll step off for you.
Okay.
Ready?
Uh, almost. Almost. Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Chris Hughes is Chief of Police of the village of Belleville contingent on background check being completed.
Satisfactory background check.
Satisfactory background checking.
Not with a satisfactory.
Technically.
Background check on.
You did pass it.
Don't hear seconding that.
Yeah.
Really? Sorry, I jumped out.
You must really, let the man be excited.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. To your motion.
My motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's in, do you need rifle?
No.
Seeing, seconded by a show lady.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at eight thirty seven P M.